All right, we would like to welcome you to our South Salt Lake City Council regular meeting. It is Wednesday, August 27th, 2025, and the time is 7:02 PM. We would like to excuse Corey Thomas and Paul Sanchez from participating tonight. I will be conducting instead of Corey, and we would like to thank our Sergeant at Arms, our police. You're keeping us safe. Thank you. We appreciate all you do. All right, with that, I will ask you to stand up and repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, we have approval of minutes for July 9th work meeting and regular meeting. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Clarissa and a second from Leanne. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? That passes. We will move on to no action comments, scheduling, and turn the time over to our city reporter.
Yes, thank you. Just want to remind everyone that this coming Monday is Labor Day and city offices will be closed. And then September is a big month. It's National Preparedness Month. You can visit the city's website to learn steps that you can take to prepare for natural disasters. And then also the Get in the River Festival takes place during the month of September. The Arts Council is partnering with Tracy Aviary for a Paint the Parkway event on Friday, September 5th, from 4:00 to 8:00. And also you can join Mayor Wood on the Jordan River during the paddle with the mayor on September 26th. And then on September 19th is the Celebrate South Salt Lake event over at the South Salt Lake Community Center. And then lastly, Crafttoberfest is happening October 4th. We're currently looking for vendors for that festival. And then the next city council meeting is on September 10th. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to public comments or questions. We invite you at this time, if you have any comments or questions, to please come up to the podium, state your name and the city in which you reside, and you will have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Hazel here in South Salt Lake, and those events were gone too rather quickly. I just wanted to take notes of them. Could you repeat the upcoming events?
Let's see, so it, the, let's, the Paint the Parkway is on Friday, September 5th, from 4:00 to 8:00. And then the Jordan River Paddle with the mayor is on September 26th. And then the Celebrate South Salt Lake event over at the Central Park, excuse me, is on September 19th.
And then could you repeat the first date?
The first one? Yeah, it is the Paint the Parkway, and that's this Friday, September 5th, from 4:00 to 8:00.
Thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience.
Oh, no worries. Hazel, you're never, it's never inconvenient. We appreciate you being here and being engaged, so thank you. You can come ask all the questions you want.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I feel like James Brown wants to say something.
You know, I'm a television host, so I have to be up to the mic all the time, you know, so.
Thank you, James.
I just wanted to let you know the chief had made me come up here. Wanted to let you know, we had our venue, Tracy Aviary, we had over 370 adults and seniors show up. We had a wonderful time. It's a great venue, and that's what South Salt Lake generates. So next year, we're going to have an even bigger one, and we're going to make sure that all of you attend.
Thank you, James. James, we appreciate your involvement. Now, all you're doing in our city, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Seeing no one else come up, we'll move on to mayor comments.
Yes, thank you. Just to clarify, paddle the river with mayor, please go on and sign up online. Those slots fill up fast. So there's only so many canoes and so many seats, so please do that. Just in the, this month, our highlight for our employees that were caught in an action of kindness was kind of a big deal. We had a situation where we were pouring concrete down on 900 West, and an individual that was riding their bike did not know that it was newly poured concrete and rode their bike through the concrete and fell over into the concrete, and Gilberto Diaz and Apoloto New, known as Beto and Mo, went above and beyond rescuing this individual from the concrete, their bike from the concrete, cleaning, helping them get cleaned up, and their bike getting cleaned up and back on their way. And just want to publicly thank them. They, they've been highlighted on our social media for the city's social media posts. Just, you know, kindness in action, and we've got some great employees that we get to work with. So just wanted to highlight their commitment to our community, and that's what I have.
Thank you, mayor. We do have great people. City attorney comments. Speaking of the great.
Oh, that's kind. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
All right. Well, you're still great. All right, city council comments. We'll start with Ray.
Thanks for sharing the story, mayor. Nothing else for me.
Clarissa? I don't have anything tonight.
I don't either.
Nothing for me, except you're all great, so thank you. I'm in a good mood. I don't know. All right, we'll move on to information, and we will, this is about traffic calming, and we will invite Jacob Moser.
Do we need to take a reshuffle, move it down later in the agenda?
Yeah, you know what? Jacob, we're going to come back to you towards the end, because I think we have some pretty quick business we can go through, okay?
Sounds great.
All right. If there's no objections from anyone, we'll do that. All right, we're going to move on. We have a lot of unfinished business this week. So as we go through these presentations, we'll just do a quick overview for those who are new to it, and then we will talk about it and take action if needed. All right, Eliza's up to the table. A resolution of the city of South Salt Lake City Council adopting a South Salt Lake Downtown Connect Plan. I will turn the time over you, to you to just kind of review it.
Good evening. So I'm here before you to go over our Downtown Connect Station Area Plan. We brought it to you on a work meeting back at the beginning of 2024, and then again in April of this year. We just need a resolution passed tonight. That's why we're here. We did take it to the Planning Commission, and they held a public hearing that was on August 7th. There were no public comments at that public hearing. And the Planning Commission was excited about the plan, and they had a unanimous positive recommendation. This is required by HB 462 that requires all cities that have a fixed guideway public transit station to plan a half-mile radius around that station. So this plan encompasses two of our stations, the Central Point Station, and then the South Salt Lake Streetcar Station. So it's a two-for-one, and it, that's why it's called the Downtown Connect Plan, because it's our downtown area. And then we have to get it certified by WFRC, which is the Wasatch Front Regional Council, so that is just part of the outline in HB 462. As part of the plan, there's a bunch of different steps in it and a bunch of different things that are outlined. And so some of the things that they propose that we implement are updating other plans, like our general plan, the mobility plan, creating other plans. The good news is, a lot of these plans that they talk about updating or creating, staff is currently working on or already talking about. So we're one step ahead, and so that's super exciting. And there's a lot of good graphics and information in this plan as well. And so one of them, we saw in our last presentation in the RDA meeting, when they talked about that Haven and Parley's Trail, which we've used in other applications, like our HTRC application, so we've already been pulling graphics for other applications, which has been helpful. So staff does recommend that you do approve it. This graphic is one that we're super excited about, one of the biggest wins, I would say, for this station area plan, is that it talks about an at-grade crossing at Central Point Place. Right now, there's no way to connect Central Point Place. Everyone who gets there has to get there from 21st South. Utopia doesn't connect, and neither does Commonwealth. And this is proposing that it connects, which would save a lot of time for people, and it would really connect our downtown, because the only at-grade crossing is Haven. And once this plan gets adopted and it gets approved by WFRC certified, this plan can get on the more regional plans with UTA and WFRC, where we can hopefully get funding to get something like this done. But without this plan being approved tonight through this resolution, we can't get on broader regional plans to get funding for something like this to get done, because WFRC and UTA won't see it as like an approved official plan. So with that being said, that's my overview. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
We have talked about this before. Does anyone have any questions, concerns? All right, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council adopting the South Salt Lake Downtown Connect Plan.
All set. All right, we have a motion by Clarissa and a second by Leanne. We will do roll call, starting with Ray.
Yes.
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 Very good. So that passes. Great. Thank you, Eliza. And we're going to hop back. It looks like we're ready, so we will invite Josh back up to talk about traffic calming, to share his traffic calming presentation.
Jacob.
I can see Jacob. Sorry. Got rough there for a minute.
I'm Jacob Moser. I'm a staff engineer here, and for traffic safety, there's primary issues that we're looking at with traffic safety is speeding, cut-through traffic, adding unsafe volume, and then cyclist safety, pedestrian safety, and parking issues. And our Traffic Safety Committee put together a new traffic calming program as, and part of that is a criteria where we take into account average speed on the road, the volume of cars, what sidewalk and pedestrian safety is present, the crash history along the road. If there's any youth facilities, like a school or community center, and then any other facilities to determine the priority of each area. And once we determine the priority of adding traffic calming, we'll do a, or as part of the criteria, we do data collection. We'll have traffic studies, measuring the volume, speed, doing site triangles on intersections, and then reaching out to residents, getting accident reports, especially for major accidents. Some of the different solutions. So speed pillows is that I have on my pictures. Primary one, we're also looking at implementing traffic circles, additional bulbouts, doing parking restrictions at intersections, bike lanes, and then sidewalk improvements. And we've been, we won a grant for Safe Streets for All, and we are still waiting for the award to be given to us from the federal, the federal award to be given to us, but we are working with Kimley Horn on developing a Safe Streets for All plan for the city. So some of our recently implemented solutions that are out there, right by Lean Walker Elementary, Carlisle Parkway, we added these bulbouts and crosswalks with the speed sign to improve that long mid-block crossing. We've also in this area been adding additional school and high-visibility crosswalks. And the school's been working to add additional crossing guards to crosswalks that don't have enough. We are adding no parking at intersections to improve sight. There was last year a fatal accident at this intersection, Truman and Main Street. We looked at where safe distances away from the intersection would be to park, so that way it's has better visibility, and then recently added that red curb and no parking signage. And Gregson Avenue, this project has not been constructed yet. Currently, this is what it looks like out there, where on the south side of the street, the sidewalk just ends. And we've been working on the design, and we'll be adding a new sidewalk with ADA ramps on that, that intersection. And then we are working with UDOT to build a pedestrian hybrid beacon, or like a hawk signal across State Streets, right by Wilson Elementary to make it safer for the school crossing and for people trying to access the bus stop right there on State Street. And 3745 South, there's been a lot of complaints about speeding through this neighborhood. So we recently performed a speed study here, and we'll be adding speed pillows to the streets as well. Any questions?
Can I add context? I apologize. I should have added this at the beginning. So this was an attempt for, to have a process that when we get complaints on parking or speeding in neighborhoods, and where do we focus on spending dollars to make improvements, and what is the necessary improvement? And so the engineering department's been working on this, and they finally got it in a form where it can be put on the website. So if somebody complains to you as a councilperson, to me in my office, that we can have them go here and fill out this app, this form, and start this process to start adding these improvements or protections in their neighborhood.
Yeah. I think what we, we thank you for all your hard work, and then it is so helpful to have this criteria that we can actually have a conversation, because everyone thinks their street's the worst, right? And so, yeah, that's great. Ray?
Sure, just a quick question. I read a news article the other day about a feature for intersections that have traffic lights, where the pedestrian actually gets a head start before the light turns green for the traffic, and how it reduces basically accidents of cars hitting pedestrians. Do we have any pedestrian headstarts? Are we looked into that at all?
It's like a delay?
It's a delay, so it allows the person to cross the street before the light turns green, so that basically more visibility is on the pedestrian's crossing, and it's meant to prevent accidents. I don't know if we have that, or if we've looked into it. I don't think that we have that. I think that, yeah, we'll be looking into that for, especially like crossing the major streets. Right.
That might be something we would need to work with UDOT on some of our.
Yes, probably. Yeah, definitely.
Definitely have to loop them in. So I love that idea, though. I hadn't heard of that.
Yeah.
Was that city done here in Utah? That's, because that's a whole different story.
I don't know. I was on, you know, the news app scrolling, and I just saw it. I can't remember if it was specific to Utah or not, but. Okay.
Thank you. Seriously, I feel like there's a clear process now, so thank you.
Are speed pillows permanent or temporary?
They're permanent. They're going to be concrete and embedded in the road. Yeah, there's, yeah, they're on Sixth East.
Okay. Thank you, Jacob. We appreciate you. All right, we will jump down to unfinished business to item number two. We'll invite Yasmina. We're looking at a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council adopting the South Salt Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. We'll let you give us a quick overview. We've talked about this before.
Good evening. Thank you. Yes, we talked about this a couple weeks ago. So the Salt Lake County Hazard Mitigation Plan with the South Salt Lake Annex, the plan essentially identifies natural hazards, some man-made within the city, and allows us, over the next five years, to really think about how we can prevent some of them, mitigate some, and prepare for others, the ones that we can't essentially stop force of mother nature. The plan needs to be updated every five years, and so we are at the expiration date as of May earlier this year. It also provides the city to apply for certain grants, such as the Brick Grant. And if there is a major disaster, it will allow the city to have a certain amount of funding, because we have this plan in place. And so I'm happy to answer any questions or review more of my slideshow from last time.
I think that was the gist of it. Anyone have any questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council adopting the Salt Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan as required by the Federal Disaster Mitigation and Cost Reduction Act of 2000.
Hey, we have a motion from Clarissa, a second from Nick. We'll do roll call, starting with Ray.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, moving on, I will turn the time over to Josh. Sorry, I can't speak tonight. I'm losing. I was great, and now I'm losing it. All right, Josh, for item number three, will you give us an overview, please, quick? We have talked about this before.
Yeah, we presented on this last time. It's just an update to the disposition of property, surplus property. So we're trying to modernize it. Like I said last time, it's been a few decades since this code was updated. Just try and bring it more in line with mainstream operations and how things work in the world now, as opposed to in the 90s. So, you know, it's going to be helpful for staff, try and get into line with, with, with what we can do and make it a little bit more practical. So questions about specifics, we'd be happy to talk about, but I think we discussed it last time.
Any questions? It's pretty straightforward. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending Chapter 3.16 of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code related to the disposal of surplus personal property.
A second. All right, we have a motion from Leanne, a second from Clarissa. Roll call, starting with Ray.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, great. Now we will move on to item number four and invite Sharon on up. She's going to be talking about amending the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to modify animal services fees.
Sharon Hari with this Department of Neighborhoods, recapping our requests for the consolidated fee schedule updates, including two parts of our division. One is on animal services. Side, the other side is, the other portion is on community center rentals. So if we need to recap, I can, but just in general, we are changing some of the services we provide and the fees we charge with an animal services for licenses, permit, and other services. And then at the community centers, we're changing some of the things we actually rent, or the names of the places we rent, and adding an additional availability of, of, of support staff as well. I'm happy to go into more detail or answer more questions.
We talked about this unless anyone has questions. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending Section 3.010 of the South Salt Lake City Municipal Code to modify animal service fees.
A second.
All right, we have a motion from Nick and a second from Ray. We'll do roll call, starting with Ray.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Wonderful. And Sharon, you stay up here for item number five.
I forgot they were separate. This item is updating the fees for parks and community center, and as I said earlier, it affects some of the names, some of the spaces and staff provided.
There is no questions. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve an ordinance of the South Salt Lake City Council amending Section 3.11.010 of the Salt Lake City Municipal Code to modify parks and community center fees.
A second.
We have a motion from Clarissa, a second from Ray. We'll do roll call, starting with Ray.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
All right, new business. We're going to invite Corby up to talk about all things stormwater. He loves to talk about stormwater, so this is going to be fun. And good news, I asked him how our stormwater did today in the big storms, and they were great. No problems.
That's good.
We always like that.
Okay, so we're here to talk about stormwater. Oh, I'm Corby Talbot with the Public Works Department. Stormwater ordinance. Due to some recent changes in the state, they have changed our permit from co-permitting to the Jordan Valley municipalities to a small MS4 permit. So there is one reason we need to make some code updates. Also, with House Bill 507 back in 2024, Senate Bill 220, and House Bill 368, they've all required some changes for our stormwater ordinances and how we do things. This is going to be quick, so I'm going to go through it. So starting off with, I don't know how you say this. Do you say it, Chapter 13, Section 25, or is it Chapter? I don't know how to do it.
Being fancier than you are.
1325. I've never understood the ordinance that much, so. Anyway, the equivalent residential unit, there was an error in there. It's supposed to be 3,700 square feet and not 27, like it says right now, 2,700 square feet. So we're correcting that, making that the 3,700 square feet like it's supposed to be for, that's for how we bill for the stormwater fee. It's currently being billed using the 3,700, but it was just an error, so we're fixing that. In Chapter 70, Section 76, there's some definitions to meet the new permit, some updates there, nothing big. In chapters, or whatever, 78, 1378, this is where the meat of the changes are, and so in, in the Um, this is where the meat of the changes are. And um, so in um, in the part five oh, I'm not sure how to say all this stuff, but um, there is some landscaping requirements, some private landscaping requirements. They cannot hold up a C F O. So when you do a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which is our SWIP, we'll say that yeah, um, we cannot hold up um, a C F O with this new um, House Bill uh, three sixty-eight. So we've had to put some changes in there for that and change some of our processes along with that. For the SWIP review requirements, there, they put some number of days to review those and some comment backs. And they put, they put some, just some guidelines on us there. So um, and then in um, in oh eight oh, uh, there is a requirement from the state that we allow for electronic oversight inspections. Uh, currently, we do physical oversight inspections, but we have to allow for like, like electronic oversight inspections. That allows the contractor to perform, to take pictures or videos of their site, um, send them to us. And then we use that information to do our inspection off of, on a monthly basis. Uh, so we had to make those changes there. Um, and then it also gives us some rules about how we can then go back to the physical um, onsite inspections. Um, it also in one ten, uh, stop worker, work order exceptions. It, we can only stop work for certain things. Um, it's all based on um, like uh, best management practices, um, which ones they use. Stormwater can be very confusing. Um, and it's hard to understand. These bills were very confusing and hard um, to go through. Uh, we did our best to understand them and put it in our code and update our code. Um, but the stop work orders thing um, is based on best management practices and how they use them. And then there's some other enforcement actions that was also changed in section one twenty that plays into the stop work orders. So there's a lot of things that kind of play together. Um, and then um, in um, thirteen seventy-nine oh five oh, um, one of the issues with the Jordan River is E coli. And that's, there's a T M D L on the Jordan River for E coli. T M D L means total maximum daily load. And um, so I did request that we not that we help, that we prevent some of our long-term management practices um, to not allow pet waste on them. So we don't want a dog park on top of our above-ground retention base for storm. So, um, and then um, the uh, allowable discharges in the la- in, in chapter eight or section eighty. Um, just to meet, we just um, updated those to meet the new permit. So there's kind of an oversight. I don't know if you need more detail than that, but I figure you'll probably end up reading the code and we'll probably come back to unfinished. Anyway, so, yeah.
Any questions? Questions for Corby?
No, not a question, but would it be fair to summarize that the changes made are more favorable for developers on projects? Is that sort of?
Yes.
Just I'm getting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of the legislation came from big developers that um, but mostly
I'm surprised.
Private home builders. Uh, not private, but large home builders, single-family home builders is where a lot of that development, that those changes came from. So we have to meet the rules, but we don't have big neighborhoods being built, but the rules are rules.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Corby.
Any other questions?
I think I have more both question and comment. What is uh, C F O? What is that?
Certification of Occupancy.
Okay. Then the other part is, I think our stormwater team is great because I, we've, we've actually had them help us in our community. And I think that largely, part of what we do in our city plus alongside the mayor is to ensure that our city is um, actually running well, which it is now, because we've had actually our, they are, we are a private community, but we've had them help. So I'm actually thankful that we have storm, our stormwater city department personnel there. They know what they're doing. And to the mayor, to the departments, you guys are all doing a great job. And this is what, this is partly what our job is, make sure our city runs well enough to keep it operating in this sense and that there is no need to, you know, this isn't part of, this isn't anything about transparency. This is what has to happen for our city. So thank you.
Yep. And I would just add that um, when we implemented a stormwater fee, finally after decades and decades. Um, this is what we get, right? We get to have a more organized um, department and we have long-term plans and we have funding for projects. So, and Corby, just in case they missed your last slide, it said, get your mind in the gutter. Let's keep it clean.
That's right.
We needed to say that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, of course. You always do a great job. Alright, that is, oh.
Would we be ready to move this to the next regular meeting?
Which would be, I will entertain a motion that we move this to unfinished business on our next regular meeting in September, September tenth.
I will make that motion as you just laid out.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion from Ray, a second from Clarissa. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Alright, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion from Ray, a second from Leanne. All in favor?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, everyone.